All the meeting to order, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiances to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Here.
Gary?
Here.
McMullin?
Reed?
Here.
Mayor B. D.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have them.
So with that, I'll start with the proclamation for Champions Day. Whereas Streeter, Illinois is a dynamic, diverse community with a rich cultural history and is also a community of athletic teams, including those within our little leagues and schools. And whereas on June 10th, 1983, the Streeter High School girls softball team became the Illinois High School Association's state championship. And whereas this championship was the first ever state championship for a Streeter High School team and remains the only one to date. And whereas the 19 players, four coaches, and two managers displayed unity, team spirit, sportsmanship, and remarkable skill that brought great pride and recognition to our community. And whereas our hard work and dedication have been an inspiration to all who know them. And whereas June 10th, 2023, marks the 40th anniversary of this championship win. Now, therefore, I, Mayor B. D., Mayor of the City of Streeter, Illinois, do hereby complain, proclaim, 30 June 10th, sorry about that, 2023 as Champions Day in Streeter, Illinois, and urge all citizens to join me in commemorating the outstanding champion team for their efforts and successes in continuing to enthusiastically support our upcoming sports teams and organizations and show them all appreciation for the pride they have instilled in our community. With that, I know we have a couple members that were on the team in the audience. And they're planning an event at June 10th. Do you want me to go or do you'd like to come up? Yeah, please. With this, I had talked to you, and so I pulled up the newspapers from 1983 when this happened, and it was very interesting. At that time, Streeter High School was 107 years old. And this was the eighth year of softball. And it kind of came off of what looks like Title IX, and then the girls softball team got started. So eight years after, the girls softball were the first team that the high school had, first team and the only team still to win a state championship. And I just went through those articles and it said, at that time, there was a mile-long convoy, basically, coming back to town. And you're greeted and a thousand people followed the girls into the auditorium. So I'm sure that was an amazing experience. While the June 10th.
It was, thank you. Thank you, Mayor B. D. Thank you, Council, for the proclamation. Again, for the road naming that Athletic Director Nick Hager initiated with Mayor B. D. to get implemented. We really appreciate that. My name is Amy Mokil, 612 Title Street, Streeter, Illinois, once upon a time, now from Kankakee, Illinois. And I have my teammates, Abby Peddletine and Jean Law, with us here this evening. The other 19 of us are current spirit. We just want to thank you again. One of the reasons that this was really important to us to come and be with you this evening is just as the mayor mentioned, the community outpouring at that time was something that literally movies are made of and books are written about. And so I do have a copy of the book, Beyond Our Wildest Dreams, about that season that I'm going to give to the mayor to share with the town council. There is a copy also that's been donated to the library, a copy that's been donated to the Historical Society. And we will have copies for sale at cost at the farmer's market on June 10th, the same day as our Day of Champions. If you are interested in a book, you can contact myself or Richard O'Hara directly via Facebook. You'll get about half the cost is what you might get on Amazon. But I'm going to start this with.
Do you want, we can do a full one for that officially?
Thank you. And as you read, thank you. As you all hopefully read through this book one day, you'll see some familiar names. The Connor name that is mentioned in there is, can I call you this? His father was instrumental in helping establish the softball facilities for Streeter Softball, which really was the gateway to everything that we were able to achieve. And he was actually coached us girls in some softball. He coached travel ball for us through that journey. We played with his sister. And so, you know, a big part, you'll see some other names and pictures. It really is, the chair kind of saw himself more as a facilitator of the newspaper coverage we had at the time, and thanks to folks like Carol Olson, and some remarkable names, Scoop, as we called him. The wonderful coverage we had from the radio station. It was just such a community spirit and event. We were just a bunch of girls who grew up playing ball, wearing jean shorts and saddle shoes, you know, plastic mitts, you know, we didn't know anything about anything. Yeah, we just had, Pet Liquors was my first sponsor down the street. Mark Kanski gave us popsicle at no game but a lose. And it was just an amazing place to grow up. And I sort of look around this room and to you guys up at, you know, on these podiums, I think about how grateful I am that you all step around and continue to make our city what it was and what it is and driving through downtown and the murals and the artwork and the renovations and just everything. Such a beautiful experience to come back and visit. It was such a wonderful place to grow up in. And you guys are making that so for the children of Streeter today as well. The one thing I want to move you guys with, my father, unfortunately, passed away. He did not get to see the Cubs in the championship. And he didn't get to see this take place, but he would have been the first one to come home at all of this nonsense. But he was so very proud. And one of the things that was nice for me, as his daughter experiencing this, I was just another kid playing ball, and you're kind of in your moment, right? You don't really pay attention to what's going on around you. When you look back on this with adult eyes, and I was reading through the articles, and one of the things that really profoundly struck me was how in every single article, he was very cognizant to mention every single girl on the team. You know, this was truly about a team. This was not about me. This was not about my dad, although, you know, there had things that would make one think so. The true story was really about the 19 of us, of us girls. And in the book, you'll see some photos from that themed parade through town that you spoke about. You know, we have some members of the fire department here, and we probably have some people from the police department as well. And whether you were around at that time or not, your department made that happen for us. And I think it's important to remember that the impact that each individual has and small acts of generosity and kindness can never be overlooked. And pure departments have a place in many hearts to this day. So we thank you all for those things that you did. So at one of my father's speeches, he talked about, I guess people were saying, well, they're a lucky team. They got lucky. And I said, lucky? Heck, yeah. Yeah, we were super lucky. And I wanted to share one paragraph. The luckiest team in the state of Illinois? Surely this is true. These 19 young women are indeed lucky to have lived in a community that early on recognized the value of athletics to girls and women, to have had parents and neighbors and friends that banded together to form Streeter U Softball, to have had parents who taught them the game of softball throughout the years. They are indeed lucky to have lived in a city that was completely receptive to the idea of women's athletics and provided the property to help for the summer program. And we are indeed lucky to this very day to be honored with the proclamation, with the street naming, and hopefully that all of you will join us on June 10th. We have some angel investors who have provided this opportunity for us to give back to you, the community of Streeter. So please come out and join us for that event, and we'd love to chat with you at that time. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
We will move on to the public comment section of tonight's meeting. If you have comment for council, please come to the podium and state your name. And we do have a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, I'm Jeremy Whitfield. Sorry, a little nervous, but it took me a while to get here. I was born and raised in this town. I graduated Streeter High at '07, and I've always loved this town. It's always brought me back. With that being said, I did graduate in '07, and then I went off to school. I finished school and I finally came back. And this was the first year that one of my nieces had switched to the high school. And now that I'm back in town living, I was able to pick up my niece one day. And with that being said, the reason why I'm here today is to hopefully get a light for the high school. I know that, well, let me rewind a little bit. When I was 16, 2006, I was on my way to the high school. I ended up getting to the high school and once I got to the high school, October 17th, I was the one that was the first one on the scene for Sarah Wyble. I ended up, like I said, being the first one on the scene, so I got to Sarah. And then Elena, that's when she turned around. Ended up going to her side, staying there until the paramedics went. And then after I left, I went to design class, and that's when I was sent home. And, you know, that's when I had the Dean of Officer Crescension in my living room. It was a really dark, gloomy day, but I am very grateful for that day because it changed my life. I wasn't on a good track, you know, being a black man from Streeter. I wasn't taking the best of roads, but it definitely opened my eyes. And I, even though I'm grateful for it, I don't wish that upon anybody. So fast forward just a little bit. I went to pick up my niece one day, and I realized that nothing has changed. I understand you guys got the lights, you got the flashing, you got the signs. Every day I've been out there with a sign, I've almost witnessed a kid get rolled over. And there is no way around it. I definitely encourage you guys, from 3 o'clock to 3:10, there are kids coming out. After that, you don't see a kid in sight. So for that 15 minutes, those kids are endangered, the ones that are crossing Bloomington, Morel, and Lincoln. So with that being said, I did put my story out. Of course, I didn't want to put my story out there with the encouragement of her family, Sarah Wyble's family. So I did tell my story and I put it out, and I got a petition started. Within seven days, I have over 900 signatures for that alone. I have mothers with their kids coming out, strollers and everything, holding signs to get people to slow down. There's semis, there's, you know, traffic just flying, people cursing you out because they're crossing the road. I witnessed a girl just today, about 3:05, almost getting mowed down. And when she stopped, the car, the person in the car was actually aggravated with her. And those are the problems that they face every day. I've been out there for about a week and a half. I've been out there for about a week and a half, and probably four days out of that, six, seven days, I've noticed a kid almost get hit. And I just, hopefully, you guys can, you know, just think about it. And I'm nervous, so there's a lot that I want to say that I can't quite say, and I don't have the time to say it. I just encourage you to sit out there for that 15 minutes, just to witness with your own eyes. Our police department, they, there's not very many of them, you know what I mean? So, and we have so much other things going on, that's the last thing that we need is, you know, caught there morning and night, you know? So a push button like North Line half would be, if it could have saved Sarah, you know what I mean? Or the girl in 2000, or the girl in 1991. This is not just, you know, Sarah Wyble died, you know what I mean? It's been happening for decades, and I think we're overdue. It's been 16 years. It was 20 years before that.
So that can be real long, that helps.
Yeah.
So we can't actually just make that decision? That's an act of decision.
Right. And that's why I'm starting the petition, I'm putting the talk out there.
And so they have rules and regulations on what qualifies, traffic counts and different things to cover that.
You're right.
So I know that, I know, you probably can jump in and back on that one, but I know that that was something that was reached out and considered.
Yeah.
But we don't meet the requirements for it with the state highway. I mean, we can ask again, but it's just.
Wouldn't we move us to open up a dialogue with IDOT again?
Yeah, I mean, we can ask them, but we were, it was rejected already at one point. So, you know, it's just now.
These cars are flying 40, 50 miles an hour.
I mean, it's almost the same traffic count you would have in North Line, it's the same road.
100%.
Split between North and South by doing that. But still, if North Line justifies, why would it not have?
Thank you. And it's just, if it's just a push light, or even to pay somebody to stand out there with a stop sign every day, you know what I mean? 15 minutes out of the day, we save a lot of kids. I just encourage you, sit out there one day, just one day. I'm getting emotional because I had to witness it at 16, and I don't wish it upon anybody. I had to sit in Sarah Wyble's family and tell them exactly what happened because they're that family that want to know. And every word that came out of my mouth broke these people's hearts. And I don't wish that upon anybody. And I'm grateful for your guys' time, and I understand it's probably, you know, a gray area there, but to fight for these kids' future, you know, so that competition that she had, you know, can happen to somebody else instead of, you know, Sarah Wyble was 16 and she was crossing the road. In 2007, I mean, 2006, we didn't have cell phones like that. She wasn't on her cellphone. It was 7:50 in the morning, she was crossing the road. So just take in consideration, every day, literally, just sit out there. I encourage everybody, sit out there at 3 o'clock, and you will see exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. Bobby Elias Jr. I live on the corner of West Bridge Street and Fourth Avenue. And there's a spot in the road where one of the utility companies had did some work on, and they left the job unfinished. There's a sinkhole probably about six or seven inches in an area of approximately six foot by six foot, right at the address of 205 South Fourth Avenue. And I'd like to see if we could get the utility company or the city of Streeter to fill in the hole. And then I have one more thing. The property at 708 West Bridge Street is, I think it needs to be addressed to have the property cleaned up. I know the man that lived there had, when the tornado went through a couple of years ago, did a lot of damage, knocked a tree down and on a car and ruined his front porch, but it's been two years and the property is still in shambles. I'd like to see if this.
Code enforcement's been going after the firm.
Okay. That's about it. Thank you.
I got the address over there. Is there anyone else that has comments? Then we'll go on to new business. Item 1, Resolution 2023-23, appropriating $90,000 in motor fuel tax funds in connection with downtown traffic light project by St. Streeter and Illinois Department of Transportation under provisions of the Illinois Highway Code, MFT Section 2300000GM. You get a motion and second. Okay, Tim and then Dave and Reed? At the second, I have to remember last names. No. Okay, any discussion? Into those, Jeremy?
This is what we talked about at the committee hold last week, so everyone's noticed the timing of being off downtown on the lights. We went through them with IDOT, Jeff and I, as well as the Traffic Control Corporation who would sell the controllers. Controllers are aged 20 to 30 years old. There's a mixture of issues with those as well as the wiring. So we're proposing a 50/50 split roughly with IDOT to replace all the controllers with wireless controllers. So we won't need to worry about the wiring or the new controllers. Approve tonight, then we will issue the, issue the signed proposal to the traffic control system, get it ordered, and start installing. I recommend approval. Hopefully, we can get the lights working.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye. Item 2, Resolution 2023-24, authorizing approval of a quotation from Traffic Control Corporation to replace 11 downtown traffic signal controllers. You get a motion and second.
Second.
I'm getting used to the voices on the new council. So it's him and then Moose with the second. Right? Any discussion? So this is related to item 1? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye. Item 3, Resolution 2023-25, authorizing approval of a bill of sale to purchase 10 used Panasonic Tough Books CF31 mobile computers for the Streeter Police Department for usage in patrol cars. You get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Connor and then Mr. Reed with the second. Any discussion? I want to give a quick update on that one.
As we talked about in the whole meeting, our department is currently using older CF31 computers, running on Windows 7. They can't be updated, and we can't update programs. It's causing problems with our servers. It's our, it's our way to communicate with dispatch. We're getting new refurbished computers, running on new hardware. Who knows, 10 will keep us up and running for years to come. Also, it's the most cost-effective way because we'll be able to use our same computer models we have, our squad cars now, which run about $2,500 each, we reverse the brand for 80 seconds this way.
Any questions or comments?
They use all the same wires, isn't it?
Yep.
So they'll be no rewire.
All yours, popping it out.
Yep.
Okay, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye. Item 4, Resolution 2023-26, authorizing approval of a bill of sale to purchase 1 new squad car for the Streeter Police Department. You get a motion and second.
Second.
Okay. Tim and then Moose with the second. Any discussion? So this one, are we trading in three or four vehicles?
I'm looking to trade in four vehicles.
So it's the truck and then three traditional?
Truck and the other three.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question about that. The truck that you're thinking about trading in, is it the white pickup truck with the Streeter owner?
Yes, it is.
I can ask you, why would we do that? Because the truck's in really good shape, it looks like.
We don't usually have questions from the audience on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But that's okay. But you had that, you could go ahead.
When we purchased that truck, after about 7,000 miles, the engine blew on it. We since put another 111 on it, and it's blown the engine again. So we're looking at about an $11,000 charge. So that's why we're just looking to get off the grid.
We were scheduled to replace anyway.
Yes.
It was a budget that's for the earth.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that your last pickup truck?
That's our only pickup truck.
All right, any other questions? All right, clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye. Item 5, motion to receive and place on file, plan recommendation 2023-04 to approve and authorize a parking plan for property located at the Outlot west of the Villas of Hallibrook Development on East Main Street in Streeter. You get a motion and second.
So, I'll second.
Moose and then Dave Reed with the second. Any discussion or questions?
Just, Plank Commission unanimously recommended last week, so this is to build a Dollar General at the Outlot that was installed there, west of the Villas of Hallibrook, beats all the city codes. They'll be putting a screen bumper between the parking lot and the building and the church, the church and answering to the west there, landscaping out front. So beats all the codes and unanimous recommendation from the Plank Commission.
And then this is also item 6. So we're, motion to replace or receive on file, and then we will authorize some of the grounds on item 6. So, any other, any questions or comments?
No, the only answer that we're looking at was, did they have to put retention pods on for their community?
They did it as part of the, of the.
Of the original.
Yes. So, yeah, they'll go with those pods out front of the Villas.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye. Item 7, Resolution 2023-27, approving and authorizing a parking plan for property located at the Outlot west of the Villas of Hallibrook Development on East Main Street in Streeter. You get a motion and second.
I make the motion. Second.
Dave Reed and Dave Connor with the motion and second. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye. Item 7, Resolution 2023-28, approving and authorizing the designation of a portion of Glass Street adjacent to the Streeter High School softball field to have an honorary name of Lady Bulldog Way. You get a motion and second.
Second.
Tim with the motion and Moose with the second. Any discussion?
Would there be signage for that?
Yes, I've asked public works to have signs ready for the 210 event so that they'll be ready. And this portion of Glass Street does not have any home addresses on it, so we won't run a risk out there being.
I know which here handles.
Any other questions or comments? This will tie into our proclamation, so. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Mayor B. D.
Aye. Item 8 are the appointments. So this is an every-four-year item to appoint, to a four-year term. Patricia Henderson is our city clerk, and Julie Lucas is our city treasurer. I get a motion and second, please.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay. Dave with the motion and Moose with the second. Any comments?
I'm not going to make you regret it, all right?
All right. Call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye. Item 9, consent agenda, request a motion and second to approve the consent agenda with a fund warrant total of $856,839.21.
Second.
Thank you. All right, so it's Tim and then Moose with the second. Any discussion?
This is something that I can hold on since I wasn't present for these meetings for minutes. Can't we approve that?
I asked about that before we.
That's why I run it off.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Connor?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye. City official comments? Mr. Gary, anything?
I'm good.
Okay.
I don't have a phone this time. Well, they don't care.
Okay. I have a list. So first, I want to just send a thank you to those that helped with the downtown planters this week and planted those. From the Garden Club, Dacres Nursery helped, and the Streeter High School students also helped and brused a lot of the plants in their greenhouse. So it's a good collaboration and so thanks to those involved. We're hitting into the summer month, so event season's coming up. Engle Lane is our first play of the year, which is ongoing. There's a couple more days for that. The Saturday, May 20th, from noon to 7:00, is the Food Truck Fest in the city park. There's two bands, 19 food trucks, games, over 40 vendors. And then the Sunday, there's a breakfast fundraiser for Streeter Fest at the Oakley Avenue Club. The following weekend, the 26th or 28th, Heart Fest is going on. And then that Monday is the Memorial Day 5K at the YMCA. So that's kind of kicks off May, and then we get into June with the farmer's market,